I was always the oldest until he came along.
Good evening, everyone. It's about six o'clock, so a little bit after we're going to get started. This is the Town Council's workshop on growth management and multifamily housing. So, welcome, everyone. We have quite a nice crowd here to help us work through this presentation and the conversation, as well as a nice crowd of citizens. The workshops that have been undertaken in the past, we're going to follow pretty much the same format. We're going to hear from our staff regarding the presentation and the current state of growth management and multi-housing. And then there will be an opportunity for questions and comments from the public before we adjourn, so that we can hear from you as well. I do want to welcome everybody. There's actually quite a range of people here with us. Not only all the councils, I do want to send Councilor Foley's apologies for not being able to attend. She had a prior commitment before we scheduled this, but she has submitted some questions that we want to pose to staff, as well as she's going to be keeping in touch with what we are talking about tonight. But I also wanted to welcome, we invited four committees, two, four of our town committees to the table as well, and so I wanted to welcome them. And if we can go around the table and introduce ourselves, in case people don't know. But those committees include SEDCO, which is Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, the Long Range Planning, Planning Board, and...
Housing Alliance.
Housing Alliance, so I apologize for forgetting that. So if we can go around the table, and I'll start. My name is Sean Bevan, and I'm the council chair.
Bill Donovan, Town Council.
Judy Roy, Long Range Planning Committee.
Peter Hayes, Town Council.
Kate St. Clair, Vice Chair.
Ellen Paul, Long Range Planning Committee.
Will Roman, Town Council.
Kevin Freeman, SEDCO.
Chris Chiazzo, Town Council.
Karen Martin, staff with SEDCO.
Dan Bacon, Planning Director.
And Tom Hall, Town Manager.
And with that, I'm going to turn over the manager to begin the presentation.
Yeah, we have a lot to get through, so I'll just provide a couple of quick introductory comments, and then we'll get right into the meat of this conversation. There's been well-publicized interest in multifamily housing. In Scarborough, in fact, the Town Council, many of you have been involved in almost a systematic zoning, rezoning, if you will, particularly in the growth areas. And in fact, I think almost all zones in the growth area permit one level or another of some type of multifamily housing. Beyond that, the council, in the past year and a half or two, has been more intimately involved in a couple of projects. The Griffin Road project down in the Dunston area, Vesta, or the Southgate House was another one where a TIF was actually approved to help facilitate that process. And then, of course, most recently with some specific zone changes on Mussey Road to allow some multifamily development there as well. But there's even interest that goes, probably 10 years back, originally with Eastern Village and Dunston Crossing, there were always multifamily components of those projects. Just coincidentally, they're just now getting to the point of their developments that they're considering the multifamily components of that. So, all of this is coming together kind of at the same time, and that's not by surprise. And we'll get into some of those trends that are emerging, that have been well documented, that really kind of bring us together tonight. And then, kind of on top of that, and maybe the thing that will be the focus of the discussion, there's two larger-scale developments that have expressed interest. One of which staff has been aware of and working with since May of this year. The other one was more recently in August. But these are projects that, one of which has been before the planning board for an inventory, site inventory analysis, and well-publicized in the paper. So these are no big surprises, they're kind of, they've been looming, but they're ready to start to move forward. And in fact, staff has held and slowed this process down for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to get acquainted with the projects, with the potential impacts, and do some analysis, so we could be resources to you. And a lot of that thought, we'd like to share with you tonight. But also, we wanted to make sure that the new council was seated, kind of got their legs under themselves. But these projects are ready to start moving forward. We're not here to advocate on behalf of any one of those, but really, really think it's high time, because the council has spent some time to understand some of the background issues, and put this conversation in some bigger context, if you will. So the territory we'd like to cover tonight involves both management ordinance and related impact fees, I should say, that relate to that. We have about 10 years of experience with both those mechanisms in place, and we can share that experience with you. I guess the other component of that is, then to do, we've done some analysis of multifamily development as a housing type. And that's a piece that we've had the luxury to spend some time with, and to get acquainted with those impacts. And we'd love to spend time this evening sharing kind of the results, preliminary results of our assessments, if you will, of that. So this is a collaboration of Dan and Karen and myself. Dan will be the lead presenter. We intend this to be interactive and conversational, so at any moment, please, by all means, ask a question. We want to make sure you leave tonight with an education on the background issues. So please, by all means, speak up as we go forward. So please bear with us, there's a fair amount of territory we'd like to cover, but I think in the end you'll find it informative. So with that, we can dive right in.
Great, thanks, Tom. As Tom mentioned, we have a lot of ground to cover, and there's a good number of slides, but please do kind of raise your hand, or stop, or jump in anytime you have questions, or want to ask clarifying things, or have comments. And as Tom indicated, we're going to talk a fair amount about history, you know, what the town's experience has been in terms of the growth management ordinance, and why we established it. And then we're going to kind of get into the current trend and interest in multifamily housing. And we're learning, too. You know, this is a new thing for Scarborough, so we have some ideas, but we need input from the council, and all the community members, and those in the audience, and to learn more as kind of we go, as we learn about multifamily housing.
Just a piece of housekeeping, we have a fact sheet that's been circulated. I'm not sure if we'll speak to it directly, but we try to distill a lot of what's in this presentation on that one sheet. So it's very, very high-level, we'll make that available online. And there were some other documents, more detailed analysis, that we would rather advance in, are on the website right now.
So, some of the information that's on this is going to be explained in this presentation, because I definitely have some questions about it.
All of it. This isn't intended to be kind of a takeaway, just kind of a high-level piece.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess the last piece I'd like to mention before we dive in is, I'm glad there's some Long Range Planning Committee members here. Long Range Planning Committee has sunk their teeth into this a bit at their last few meetings, and as the council typically has been, depending on them to kind of vet and understand issues before they get to the council, they've begun that process. We felt that it was important to have this workshop, you know, before they went too far downstream, but the Long Range Planning Committee has done a great job of providing us some initial kind of thoughts and feedback on all of this subject matter. So with that, I'll dive in, and just sort of start a little bit with really the history of growth management in Scarborough. I'm not going to dive too deep. And many of you, as developers, residents, you know, participants, counselors, maybe, over the years, probably experienced this firsthand. But really, the history as to why the town has a growth management ordinance was the rapid single-family housing growth and development that was occurring, particularly in the late 90s, early 2000s. And this graph shows that. Could be hard to see from your seats, but between 1997 and 2002, there was about 200 units being built a year. And 90% of those were single-family houses, and single-family homes then and now typically have .8 school-age children per household. So 1,100 single-family houses equals over 800 school kids. So that really was, if you want to boil it down, that was really what was leading to establishing a growth management ordinance, which essentially means establishing a growth cap per year, regulating how much residential development occurs per year in town. So this graph kind of illustrates at that rate and the volume of single-family home construction at the time. In terms of the impacts of that, again, principally single-family homes, but also other housing types, but principally single-family homes with school-age children were overburdening the existing school facilities at the time. The late 90s, early 2000s, the middle school, and particularly the high school, had pretty serious capacity issues, which quickly led to a major high school incident that occurred early in mid-2000s, led to modular classrooms at the middle school, Wentworth, the old Wentworth, as well as the Corners. So the growth management ordinance was primarily geared around school facilities, but there was also some stresses occurring on other municipal services, public works, police and fire, just municipal services that serve residential development. So in terms of addressing this, kind of two primary or strategic tools that were established were, we need to control the pace of new housing in Scarborough. And so in 2001, there was a growth management ordinance that was established, really aimed at kind of moderating or leveling out the pace of housing development, particularly single-family neighborhoods that have that higher percent of school-age kids, as they are contributing to school kind of capacity challenges. A companion piece that didn't get passed exactly at the same time, but around the same time period, was establishing impact fees. Particularly impact fees to help pay for school facilities that were being necessitated by the growth in population. So in 2002, the school impact fee ordinance was passed, and the amount of impact fee varies by housing type. So a single-family house, based on statistics, currently pays about $4,300 per new housing unit. Multifamily pays roughly $1,000 per unit. Two-family, in between single-family and multi, is about $1,600 per unit.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that vary by the size of the unit, like in a multifamily? If it's a three-bedroom, it has a higher impact fee than a one-bedroom?
It does not currently. And that's actually more of a, our impact fee ordinance hasn't caught up with how we're treating units now under zoning. That impact fee's been in place since 2002, and hasn't been recalibrated based on that. So that's, but that's a really good point.
Dan, a quick question. These, the growth management ordinance and these other things, where did they come from? Were they done by the council? Were they done through comprehensive plan? Where, what was the genesis for thinking about growth, and how we're going to manage growth? Who participated? How was it done?
The council was the legislative body that passed
Right.
the ordinance, but prior to that, in 99, 2000, in that sort of the height of the residential growth
Yeah.
Growth and Services Report, a very comprehensive report was done. Perhaps Sean was involved in that, I know many others, Rick Cheney, were involved in that, where all types of growth in the community were analyzed
Yeah.
in terms of their tax value, their sort of
Yeah.
tax valuation benefit, also their demands on services.
So are we, so I asked that question, are we going to follow a similar pathway this time? And do some type of comprehensive analysis of, is that what we're doing with this stage?
We started doing that with multifamily housing, because we're faced with multifamily housing. The bigger picture is with the next conference plan, which is going to start early in the year, is to look at all types of development in the community.
But isn't that kind of putting the cart before the horse? I mean, is a multifamily part of the bigger, shouldn't we decide what we want to do in our community, what type of growth we want, where we want, and the types of growth? And do it all together? I don't understand why we're putting this multifamily ahead of that comprehensive planning process.
Right. Well, I mean, the town has through the past conference plan, and we're going to touch on some of these things, already zoned for multifamily housing in a variety of areas, and a lot of them have been permitted. So some of those decisions have been made
Right.
in terms of where multifamily should go.
But we're looking for changes to that, right?
Changes have been made, some quite recently.
Well, yeah.
We're looking at how they, the rate of development of multifamily through the growth ordinance. So there's the interplay between zoning, which allows multifamily, and then our growth permits, which allows how quickly multifamily and single-family can be built. So we'll talk about some of that stuff, and then I'm sure more questions will come up. Another key piece that the town's been picking a way at in terms of impact fees are related to traffic and transportation. So, and that's not limited to residential development, that's all development. Commercial development often has a greater impact on traffic and traffic generation, so impact fees are in place for traffic. And then I mentioned here other development requirements. Residential developments often have community services impacts, needs for parks, needs for community service programs. So typically, they pay into that system, whether it's fees, or donating open space, or community service space.
As a rule of thumb, do we have, do we know the impact fees, what percent of the total cost they actually cover?
I think it varies by...
But I mean, in general, is it like 10% of the total cost? Is it 20%?
The, that's a good question. I mean, on traffic, it, as of right now, the Dunston-Cornet intersection was done a few years ago, and the expectation is that a quarter to a third of that bill is going to be repaid by impact fees, because a half to, two-thirds was paid by DOT and federal funding through highways. So the town's tab, if you will, is envisioned to be entirely paid back through impact fees for Dunston.
On traffic, but
Right.
But the other municipal services?
Schools, we'd have to look at that. I mean, we're going, there's a slide later on showing how much is being paid so far.
Can, just, can I just ask to clarify that? But an impact fee is a one-time assessment on a new construction, it's not like an ongoing.
Right.
So it would be hard to assess, I would think, you know, the actual percentage of the cost that it's paying, would depend on how long that, you know, building were to be existed in, accu-recht, over the life.
It's not an operating cost. So impact fees are to pay for facilities and infrastructure. So if you need to improve an intersection because X amount of new developments coming in, it's to make that intersection improvement, not operate, not plow the roads, not operate the signals. Similar to schools, it's to add classrooms, not fund the operating cost of the school.
Got it.
This slide, just kind of transitioning to the growth management ordinance in general, kind of key points. In the early 2000s, a decision was made based on trends, that 135 growth permits would be the cap. So that's considered the annual allocation of growth permits. And that's been the case, more or less, since 2001, sort of the last 15 years. Within that ordinance, there's also a limitation on individual developments, that, so one project, say, a big neighborhood can't come in and use up the whole 135, so individual projects can only use up to 20% of the annual allocation. So that's roughly 27 permits. And that's to kind of enable a number of projects to build out over time, and not any one or two projects monopolize the permits.
And this permit represents a single-family home built in, or permitted in a given year?
A growth permit equals a single-family home. And, but if, in terms of multifamily projects, because we allow smaller units to be counted differently. So through that scenario, in say, a multifamily building, if you do a one-bedroom unit, then that's half a growth permit. Because it's half, typically half the impact of a full dwelling. So there's some, there's some funny math involved. Another piece of, a key piece of the growth management ordinance is that it's trying to incentivize development in our growth areas, where there's adequate infrastructure for growth, where we're trying to encourage housing development. So that's, so there's a maximum of 50 permits that can be allocated in the limited growth. So that means 85 permits in the growth area. And then a kind of a key topic for this evening is, there's also this reserve pool of permits in our ordinance. So you have the annual allocation, which is typically for your kind of conventional projects that we've seen over the years, subdivisions, smaller, mixed housing projects. And then there's a reserve pool for special projects. And special projects mean ones that we're encouraging through zoning, that might include affordable housing, that might include development transfer provisions, which is an incentive in our zoning, that might include a contract zone. So there's also this reserve pool for these projects that don't fit neatly under the annual allocation, or are being encouraged.
Is there application only when you run out of the 135 annual growth permits? Or do they draw upon those, whether the 135 is used up or not?
Over the last eight years, when we've been well under the 135, until the last couple of years where we're getting closer, but generally over the last eight years, we've been well under the 135, there's been no use of the reserve pool. Even with projects that could qualify, because there hasn't been competition or demand outside of the annual 135.
So it's never drawn upon unless it goes beyond the 135?
Correct. Or if there's a big project that can't meet the 25, the 20% allocation.
Yes.
Because there might be, say, a multifamily project that qualifies, that needs more than 27 growth permits.
And these so-called special projects are defined in the growth management ordinance, so it's not stat discretion, defined very clearly in that ordinance itself. Dan summarized them.
I'm summarizing them, yeah, they're not, it's not the planning board deciding, or staff, or Brian, the zoning administrator, it's the ordinance dictates which ones are eligible.
Hypothetically, if, you know, a project were to come along at the end of the year, that would then cause us to exceed the 135, would there be a retroactive allocation of those permits back into that, or is that too much of a...
Only if it qualifies. If, say, there's a lot of development, housing development occurring, we're getting close to 135, then, and projects that don't qualify for the reserve are looking for permits, they have to wait until the next year.
So, but the earlier project that might have qualified would not then go back and get reallocated from the other pool?
Yes, we haven't encountered that.
We haven't crossed that.
We haven't encountered that.
That's a good question, yeah.
So this slide just shows the growth management track record, for lack of a better term. The first third of the slide to the left is the, you know, that rate of growth that we saw pre-2002. And then the line across is 135 growth permits. And then you'll see that, starting in 2003, we've complied, we've, things have leveled out. We're below the growth limit. And, you know, that's a number of factors. It's the ordinance, it's also, there's a pretty serious recession between '07 and in 2010, we see a steady increase since the depths of the recession.
So 135's a fixed and firm amount, how do you go above that in 2007?
2007, there was a project that was an elderly project, actually Vesey Common across the street. And at that time, in 2007, before the ordinance was changed in 2008, elderly projects did not need to get growth permits. So that's reflecting that it went above, but they didn't have to comply with getting growth permits, because elderly projects don't affect the school system.
So why do that show up on this chart? Because they still have to get the actual...
Just showing the raw number of units. So, you know, we could take that out, because actually you get growth permits, I'm showing the unit count
Okay.
that year.
That entire peak from '06 to '08 probably is Vesey Square predominantly.
Okay. Interesting.
Vesey Common, excuse me.
Vesey Common is the, yeah, that one.
High peak.
The high peak.
Yeah.
Another kind of piece of the track record, I mentioned earlier, growth areas, limited growth areas, this shows the breakout of where permits were pulled. So the red lines are development growth areas. The yellow, it's hard to see from your seats, are in limited growth, so that they're, you know, developments meeting that standard, going where the town's wanting growth to occur. We're also showing multiplex development that's happened over the last eight years, and then some affordable housing that we've gotten recently through the Habitat Project. So that's showing compliance with our different types of growth permits.
And Dan, sorry, the affordable is, the definition is, is applied by, what, what...
By our, or by our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So it's, if it's rental, it's 80% of median income. If it's ownership, it's...
Well, now it's 80.
Well, it's one twenty, but it's down to one.
So it's our, it's a local ordinance, it's not like county or state or anything?
It's defined by need, too, so they're somehow secured into the future to be affordable.
Be restricted as affordable. Yep. So quickly, I wanted to show, maybe to some of your questions, Peter, impact fee track record. Since the school impact fee was established, we've collected roughly $4 million towards school facilities, and have been consistently using that towards debt service. I think particularly on the high school debt, but that's something town finance, chip finance, you know, is our kind of better than I. Transportation impact fees, which shows the quantity that we've collected over the years. The Payne Road area, you know, roughly $2.5 million, that's been in place the longest. Dunston Corner, you know, close to $600,000. Again, that's going towards debt service, the town's investment in Dunston Corner, Oak Hill and Higginson, Higginson Route 1 intersections. And I mentioned earlier, we get recreation contributions in many cases from development that go to community services. Sometimes it's open space, or amenities within neighborhoods, like Trails, Eastern Trail contributions, et cetera, instead of that. So that's kind of the background on growth management and impact fees. I know this is a lot to absorb, but now kind of want to transition to sort of the newer housing dynamics, and provide a little bit of background on this. So our current comprehensive plan, so it's 10 years old at this point, in 2006, identified the need to really kind of broaden our choices and types of housing. So we were dominantly single-family for decades. So that was highlighted in the comp plan, affordable housing, multiplex housing, you know, accessory units have become very popular in the last 10 years, and other types of housing choices and neighborhood styles. So since then, the Long Range Planning Committee and the council have been working steadily on implementing the zoning to execute the comprehensive plan. So now, in our zoning ordinance, there's a variety of types of neighborhoods, a variety of types of housing that are permitted. And now we're seeing the housing market, people's lifestyles and economics really starting to drive demand for housing diversity, particularly multifamily housing, so, and multifamily living. So I guess it's not a big surprise that we're seeing an influx of different housing types, including multifamily. And this isn't scientific, but it's more anecdotal, but millennials, singles, and empty nesters in particular, are interested in one- and two-bedroom housing types, and units versus larger, larger housing types in single-family homes. And they're increasingly interested in attached housing and rental housing, and there's developers in the audience that probably can speak more specifically about this. But that's a trend we're seeing, and it's sort of well-documented in the region and the nation, for that matter. And I guess the last point is, developers are responding. So this is responding to kind of market demand, and also what the zoning is allowing.
Just one point to be aware of and sensitive, that's not a bottomless pit. They'll be absorbing the market, and they'll be satisfied at some point. And I think that's the big question in the minds of the developers, is where's the bottom? And wanting to get their project online and available while the demand is there. And I don't have the answer to that, but I think that's part of the motivation we're hearing from the development community, that they want to get moving on this, because the trends might be changing.
So do we have any Greater Portland data, or other than outside of Scarborough? Because I mean, we've got, obviously, Westbrook's been the news a lot, with big development projects. You know, is there some way to kind of c... You know, is there some way to kind of couch where we are versus Westbrook, Corum, the surrounding greater Portland areas?
Karen, do you want to speak to that? There's a little factoid on the second bullet on the fact sheet on market demand.
Yeah, so what we've, what we've learned from looking at what's happening in Portland specifically is Portland's rental vacancy rate is about 1%. And one of the things that they're faced with is, and so recently, really for about 20 years, there hasn't been any rental units built in the city of Portland. So there's a little bit of catch-up, too, you know, because there hasn't been a lot built. You know, there's some high-end condominiums being built, but not that many being built for rentals. Recently, though, you know, the queue in Portland, last I read, I think this is from a, you know, Press Herald story, probably about 800 units in the queue, half of those are the federated project, which I think is, I think is done being discussed and is on the table. So there is, there's, there's a lot of multifamily development being proposed throughout the region. And what we've seen is, you know, there's a, an analysis that said, region-wide, there's about 4,000 more single-family owner-occupied housing, houses being, a gap in the market of about 4,000 units. And there's a specific gap of about 2,000 units in the rental market for market-rate apartments. But that's a very narrow forecast. That was through 2018. So in another two years, you know, the demand will keep changing. And one of the things that, that we looked at is not just that, the housing demand is not always coming from people just moving into the region. Even if we look at household sizes, for instance, if we, if we took, I ran some numbers, these are not anywhere, these are just, you know, numbers that we ran because we just got a large dump of data from the feds for 2015 through the American Community Survey. Even if the population didn't change at all, if 20% of our family households had one child move out and start their own household, that was a demand of about 400 new households. So even a population not changing at all, you get a demand for new units. Now, that's not all that's driving it. I think it's hard to get some of the adult children out of the home at this point. But eventually, they're going to move.
With their suitcase on the sidewalk, yeah.
You know, if there are enough units, if there's some flexibility in the marketplace, then you do see some of the more household formation from the kids. But there's also household formation just from the baby boomers changing their demand for housing, what they want. There's transitional housing, you know, maybe you're there for two years while you're building a new home, or you're transitioning into a senior facility, but you're not ready to go yet. So there's a lot of demand in that market. You know, probably Rocky or some of the others have done magnificent market studies and probably tell us more about the details. But from what we've seen, there really is a demand out there related to really the rental market.
So I think that's a good analysis for the Portland area. I'm curious to know what's up Portland doing to make some of that gap up? What's Westbrook doing? What's Corum doing? Because if we've got 4,000 units, let's say, and we're doing, they're doing 800, and South Portland's doing 1,000.
Right.
You know, and we're looking at just adding up the numbers here, we're looking at probably, what, 600, 700 or something, if not more? So I'd be curious to know, I'd be curious to know what kind of, from a regional perspective, where things are going. And not necessarily to be, timing is obviously, to your point, Tom, is important. So if we're going to jump in and obviously the first one build out is usually the first one filled. But I still would like to know kind of what we're doing as a region, if you could get something like that.
And I guess I'm troubled by, is it kind of the tail wagging the dog here? I mean, I understand that's why builders want to build those units, because that's where the demand is, they will make money building those. But at some point, I think we as a town need to think, what type of growth do we want? What type of communities do we want? So I think instead of allowing developers press us into this market opportunity, we need to balance, what do our constituents want in our community? What do we want? And that's got to be part of this planning process.
And I think for years, I mean, having been on the council way back, I mean, there's always been that not wanting, the general populace is not wanting multifamily housing in Scarborough. And the other component of it certainly is, what affect does it have on the numbers of children in school? And I think, I think Rocky gave a figure of only 12% of those that rent spaces, I think that.
Rent 12%?
Have children. So that the impact on schools is not, is not a heavy impact. But those are the, those were the, have been the proverbial concerns of the general populace of Scarborough over the years that I've.
I'm just concerned because I feel like we're, we're missing this middle piece. I feel like we have these great magnificent homes in this, in our, in our town, and we've got, you know, some apartments, or maybe we're missing the end piece. We've got some apartments that are trying to be built that are still in this higher range, you know? What about these families that do have children and do need to go into an apartment? I do, I do think there is a need for that. And I just don't think we're, I don't, I still haven't seen nothing that hits that demographic, I think, probably.
I'd also be maybe curious to know what the lifespan of what some of these projects are. I mean, if it's a multifamily unit, multiplex, is it going to 25-year lifespan before, you know, major maintenance or renovations or something like that? I know a lot of depends on construction and the type and that kind of stuff, but, you know, if there's some kind of data out there that says if we, if you do a.
Sure, we can find it out. I would expect the performal would be based on 25 to 30 years, kind of useful, useful life, that's typical.
And it'd be interesting to see what, in the past, what towns have done when those expire out? Is there, I don't know how you'd address that, but.
It's worth noting, Foxcroft and Coach Lantern are two good examples. They're 25 to 30 years old themselves. They've just been recently purchased at a premium price, I might add. I think it was a $15 million acquisition of those two, and you're going to see a full reinvestment back in those properties.
They're re-inventing all of them.
Right. And, yeah, just for example, yes, Foxcroft has built in 1981, and in fact, the per-unit price just for Foxcroft was about $160,000 a unit, somewhere in there. So it was, there, and the reason it's, they were willing to pay that much is because multifamily is a business when it's a rental. So they're paying not only the price of the unit, but they're buying a business. They're getting this incredible return. Those units are generally full, so, you know, they, they are, they are worth a lot of money to someone.
And I guess that's great as long as the markets continue to go up. If we run into another recession later on, I'd be curious to know what, what some of the other communities have done with excess multifamily housing stock, when it's gone or when, if the market falls onto you.
It hits the performer and probably affects the profit margin, but the beauty of rental housing is you can modify your rents to fit the market. I don't, I can't think of too many rental units that are shuttered up because of condition. They find a way to keep them going.
So, so what we'd be looking at is if whatever adjustments or changes we make, we want to consider this as a long-term, it's not something that's going to turn over in 25, 30 years and we'll look back at it again. Typically, I'm not saying, you never say never day again, but it's, that's going to be kind of.
Yeah, I don't know if we can answer those questions. I mean, at the end of the day, developers are putting serious money, we're talking $30 to $40 million in some of these projects. They are assuming a lot of risk in doing so. And I don't know how we can probably get some insight from their best of their thought processes, but they're the ones that are doing that market study, that are aware of what else is going on in the region and are assuming the risk as part of the project.
Karen, do you have data on Foxcroft for the number of children they have per unit?
We did. And in fact, I think we, we looked at this, I think we got them from, we, we got them from the school department, and they looked at the bus stops because they have unique bus stops for Foxcroft. And for 104 units, there were nine children.
How about the other one?
Nine school-aged children. Coach Lantern was a little bit more. I think there were about 30 children for Coach Lantern.
How many units?
Uh, that was 90.
Can you, who, I'm just confused by one thing on this. The project that are listed, they say represents approved projects. Who's approved these projects?
The planning board. They've gotten all their development.
But they haven't come before the council.
They don't need to.
They don't have to.
No, that's the thing to keep in mind. You, the council has done the land use piece. All of these projects can happen, but for some technical issues that we'd like to get through tonight if possible. But the underlying zoning is an upgrade from the comprehensive plan, and this sort of diversity of housing was a very clear theme throughout that plan, which was fully developed with community input.
So kind of to Karen's point, too, in this discussion about types of projects, not all these projects are the same. I think that's an important distinction, also that kind of drives market and demand and who wants to be in these, these projects. Dunston Crossing has planned for multifamily housing since, you know, 2006, 2007. It's always been part of their package. They finally got into the phase where they would have multifamily housing. And that setting is some multifamily units near, you know, a restaurant, coffee shop, it's sort of a mixed-use project, a little community. That's different than, you know, the Griffin Road project that was approved by the planning board and the council approved a TIF. That's an independent elderly project. That's very different than Dunston Crossing. The Avesta project was approved by the council through a contract zone, also has a TIF. That's, I think, Kate, maybe to your point, that's affordable housing that has one, two, and three-bedroom units. So if we're looking at.
But they just changed, they just added the three-bedroom?
Right.
And there's only like two of them, right?
I think there's more.
Oh, okay.
So at least a third is.
Because in the original scope of the plan, there was not any three-bedrooms.
Right.
Correct.
So they wanted to shift it to address families and have, you know, more accommodation for family affordable housing.
Okay.
As you know, that's also an historic preservation project.
Yeah.
And we're also seeing, you know, those are all, again, different than a couple multifamily projects that are, say, more luxury, more kind of high-end, that want to be in commercial areas or near commercial areas, because that's becoming pretty popular, to be close to shopping, close to employment. So they're not on top of neighborhoods, you know, butter issues aren't that big of a deal. They're kind of, instead of commercial development that right now is quite sluggish around, you know, retail, office, there isn't a good market for right now. So multifamily housing, at least these kind of more high-end projects, could be a decent standard for what otherwise could happen. So kind of getting back to why we're talking about growth management ordinance is really kind of this reserve pool. Again, the zoning is in place for a lot of these projects. It's a diverse list of projects, and we have some pretty robust kind of impact fees to kind of handle the impacts of these projects. It's really more about kind of the pace of how they build out and what's appropriate for that piece of development. You know, these are different than single-family homes where you do 10 to 15 units a year. Multifamily is you're building a 12-unit building or you're building a 20-unit building at once. So you need to get growth permits in bunches, not one at a time. It's kind of very different than our growth management ordinance is set up. Our growth management ordinance is predicated on what we've seen historically in terms of more single-family development. So the reserve pool today, again, outside of this annual allocation, the reserve pool has 215 permits, and that's been just sitting there. Since 2008, we haven't needed to draw from it, as you were asking, Bill. And it's reserved for kind of these special projects, projects that meet our zoning incentives, or projects that really don't work under the annual allocation and qualify in the growth management ordinance. And most of these projects qualify for the reserve pool. It hasn't been in demand, it's now in demand. And so in the growth management ordinance, it says, the council monitors the permits in the reserve pool. You can keep track of those. If they're being drawn from, you talk about replenishing them. And there's actually a mandatory requirement that at 50, you get down to 50 reserve pool permits, that says the council has to talk about it. So we're not at 50, but we don't want to create a situation where a project's asking for permit 49 and we're not ready for it. So that's why we're really kind of talking about.
Just as an aside, the growth management ordinance originally, remember the 135 annual allocation? It originally was set up that unused permits below 135 were swept into this, but we changed that and it states.
Rolls to the next year.
Rolls to the next year. So this surplus is a static number and needs to be changed or replenished by the council. You're the only ones that have the authority to do that.
Why was that sweet?
It was, that was the council policy decision in 2008. I believe in, I wasn't here for the conversation, but I believe in 2001, when the regional growth management ordinance was negotiated, there was a lot of concern about all the inventory of development that wanted growth permits. So there, they were actually grandfathered, if they'd already been approved, they didn't have to get a growth permit. And it was also, I think, discussed and decided that at that time, they should roll from one year to the next because 135 would decide to be, this is, the town can handle with good planning, fiscal planning, 135 permits a year. So if one year it's low, and they're made up the next year, it's still averaging 135. In 2008, the decision was, instead of using that, let's have a reserve pool to deal with the slush, or deal with the unexpected projects. It was just a policy decision.
Dan was being very blunt and adequate when he characterized negotiation. As you might expect, the development committee was intensely interested in this first conversation of growth management. Many of the people in this room lived through those conversations, and some weren't pleasant, I suspect. But I think after some time of experience and we were able to show that actually the annual allocation was sufficient to meet demand, there was some level of comfort in kind of retooling and doing this.
I think, I was on the council at the time, and we didn't want to go through a 1980s again, you know, to have, you know, a sudden rush and massive amounts of development.
I said, I don't, I don't need it. Those high school years are bad for me.
Yeah, me too.
So kind of getting to the reserve pool considerations, this is kind of the next step, is, is understanding school and municipal service impacts is something the council wants to think about as you consider replenishing the reserve pool. Growth management ordinance is in place to moderate impacts on schools principally, but also other services. So if the reserve pool is replenished, then you want some confidence that it's not going to overly impact the schools and other services. So that's where we've done some initial work around understanding, better understanding these one- and two-bedroom multifamily projects and how that relates to them. And so we've been trying to look at forecasted school and school demands and how that plays to the growth management ordinance likely valuation. That's a pretty big piece of this, the value of these projects in terms of the ROI of a multifamily project, a contemporary multifamily project. And then Karen's going to talk a bit about sort of economic development, how that plays into these types of projects.
Dan, also, I mean, we've had prior conversations, at least in the transportation community, where you've got Oak Hill intersection, you've got Dunston Corner, which are pretty much maxed out on their traffic volume they can handle now during peak hours. And I guess there is not a lot, we've invested a lot of money when you saw the impact fees on what we've collected. That's probably been more than burnt in trying to re-engineer those intersections. So is that also being factored into this impact? What, wherever these units are going to be, what impact they're going to have on Dorm Road and Oak Hill and Dunston Corner?
Right. It is, I mean, that's a key piece of the equation, obviously.
Yeah. But I didn't mention this, I'm just wondering if that's part of it.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about that. I mean, with two of the projects, one being considered enterprise business park and another being considered in Higginson Parkway, these multifamily projects, the, kind of the interesting thing about it is that, like you talked about earlier, there's not a lot of market right now for office development, retail development at scale. retail development at scale that is that meaningful. And those two sites are already approved for commercial development, and they already have kind of traffic permits. They already have gotten approval for a certain amount of traffic impact in the community. So it's, in some ways, it's trading one use for another. You know, the impacts are then permitted for commercial. So multifamily is actually less than commercial in most cases in terms of that.
But I think we're going to address a lot of that, i.e., when we look at doing the new comp plan, looking at other alternatives for transportation, i.e. increasing the mass transit. If you increase the mass transit, then you lower the individual income. So those are the kinds of things we need to think of as we put together the next comp plan to expand it out, to say, you know, what can we do with traffic? You know, if you increase bike lanes, maybe more people will use it. And if you have more buses, they're going to use the buses, park and ride. And so that's what we need to be doing as we do our overall comp plan revision.
Do we have data that tells us whether multifamily housing places a greater burden on, on our roadway system and our intersections than commercial property? Because these properties we're talking about for the largest number are zoned as mixed-use. They could be both.
We do. Next slide.
Okay. So, a quick question. So, I guess I've heard it thrown around a couple times, you know, whether it's a commercial project or a residential project. What determines which set of zoning ordinances apply? Is it just the zoning that it's going into that determines whether it's a commercial project or a residential project, or the fact that it's multi-unit housing automatically falls under a residential kind of zoning requirement?
The, in the last few years, because particularly the Higgin's Parkway zone hasn't seen the development that the town envisioned 15 years ago. You know, office parks are, I don't want to say dead, but they're elderly. And-
Thanks to Jeff Mester.
So there's not a demand right now for office development, that type of development at the scale envisioned in that area of town. So the town has been incrementally broadening what can happen in Higgin's Parkway. What broadened three years ago was allowing multifamily housing if it's part of a larger project that also has commercial. So Enterprise Business Park, again, had had a really good first five, eight years. A lot of small, great, small and mid-sized businesses went in there, and then it dried up. And so they're considering multifamily housing on the other half of their project, and that works under zone, because we said you could have multifamily as part of that type of project. The Gateway Square site that the infrastructure's in off of Higgin's Parkway, or the former Gateway Square site, infrastructure's in, and it was laid out for an office park, hotel, some retail. It's been sitting there. And retail looked at it and has decided not to move forward there, just based on its providing factors. And so that's a zone that allows multifamily as part of a larger project. They're going to come to the council, a contract zone, and say, we want to do multifamily on that site. We might be able to do some commercial, but we can't meet the zoning expectations there. And we think of, you know, they're going to say, we think it's a good use for the site. That project's already been permitted. They actually put in turn lanes for traffic capacity. They improved the intersection at the interchange at the exit 42. So, I mean, traffic-wise, that's already pretty much ready for any type of development that could happen there. So, you know, it's kind of, instead of commercial, it's potentially multifamily. And the next slide sort of shows of a trip difference to talk.
Before you go off that slide, though, the 10% are less occupied by school-aged children. Can, can we get an idea what the region, towns that are like ours, whether it's Yarmouth or Balmouth or South Portland, or-
What are you doing?
Kate doesn't probably have much, but what all those towns are doing as far as their multifamily ratio of children, so that we, I think we need to have a more confidence that the data-
Well, just the ones you, the two that she mentioned were completely different.
Yeah, well, you, I think you had to be careful, too. Bust-off numbers don't necessarily translate into full enrollment, because if you look at the high school in the morning, what percentage of the kids are actually taking that bus?
We've triangulated, if we'll back to this number, looked at state statistics, state national statistics, we've heard from actual projects, developers doing projects locally. We think that number is actually quite conservative, likely to be less than 10%.
These are one and two, there's a big difference between a one-bedroom multifamily and a three-bedroom multifamily. It's night and day in terms of school-aged kids.
But Dan, just, that's kind of a little bit misleading. Low contributor to school population, they pay impact fees. But if you take just the, you take the 854 units that have already been applied, approved, that's ominous. She, projects approved.
Well, 600 of them have not.
The total on here goes to 854, so if we just use that number. You know, at 10%, that's 80 students, so we get $80,000 in impact fees. But the annual cost of education's a million dollars. So, yes, there's impact fees, but there's-
But, but the point you're missing, yeah, the point you're missing is they're paying taxes every year, too. That's probably the operational cost of the school.
Right. But I, what would be good to have, I think, is, as we move down this pathway, is to look at that, you know, what, what is the total revenue, both from real estate-
But see, they don't cost a million dollars.
But what is the incremental cost?
Because it's the incremental cost. It's a marginal cost increase analysis, not just take $12,000 per student, that's just incorrect.
But do we know what the incremental, so we should know that, we should know that. What is the incremental?
That can be known. That's not that hard to figure out. But it's a fraction of $12,000.
But we should, those should be-
All I'm saying is, don't throw out a million dollars when that has no bearing on what-
So I think that over the course of the conversation, it's been clear that we want further analysis about the cost impact, as well as the fee structure and the impact relating to that. Because while we can segment and talk about the impact of schools, the fact is, and we've seen it, there's greater impact to other services when you don't have children. So whether it's community services or seniors, public transportation for renters and people who don't have the transportation. So I think that we need to do a broad, broad scope of what is the impact analysis, and looking at all of those. So I do have that as a follow-up check, so that I didn't talk about that.
I just think it's important, though, to recognize that the impact fees are designed for infrastructure costs, not for operational costs. So, so that when the impact fees, when we're talking about school impacts or facilities impacts, that's what the property tax generation is for, for plowing, well, not sometimes plowing, but plowing the major roads. Traffic and, you know, traffic flow state, whatever it is.
In my law, we cannot have impact fees that-
Are targeted.
That target to the ongoing operational costs. They are limited.
No, no, but we have the right, we have to have the right analysis, though.
Yeah, to clarify on impact fees, though, it's not, we don't analyze whether there's a school kid that's going to go in a rental unit or not. So it's, it's $1,080 per unit regardless. So it's not eighty school kids, $80,000. It's eighty school kids, $850,000. Now, if there's 850 units, town's getting $850,000 regardless of the percent of school kids, I guess that's just a question.
We need to have the numbers.
That's spread over the units, so it's not, it's not-
It's per unit, regardless of what the actual contribution is.
Wait, what did you just say, Chris?
It's, it's, it's like an insurance pool, right? So if, everybody has to contribute. So if there are three kids there, if there's three kids there, if there's 20 kids there, it doesn't matter, the same values coming out of that, that impact, that, that fee.
Pretty good. It all comes out of the wash.
Right.
And let's not forget that, you know, the, at least the Higgin's Parkway, it hasn't, that one will come before you, and it's going to be part of their presentation to talk about what they anticipate and really talking about the market demand and everything else.
Well, I think, I think, I think as a counselor, when you sit down and you're presented with this material, and the first thing, you know, we're reading through this stuff, and the first thing we look at is that there's almost 900 approved projects. No, I'm just saying, that's what it looks like, though, when we look at this spreadsheet that was put before us. It says, represents approved projects. And when you add up that number without getting, we didn't have the information when we first sat down, it starts your mind reeling of like, wait a minute, hold on, there's a whole slew of things that need to go on to be able to support something like this, including our schools.
I think one of the first three were.
Yeah, only the first three.
Yes.
Or start, it's those are the first three.
Of the total, 127 approved, the rest are in the pipeline.
Right. But I just, like, that, this was the first that I was hearing about a lot of these projects. So it's, it's intimidating as a counselor, because we're not just thinking of building the units. We have to think about every single thing that goes along with it. So it is overwhelming when you sit down and see the numbers like that, because we do have to think about the schools, we do have to think about the transportation, we do have to think about what it's going to do to our town, and what it's going to make our town look like. I mean, those are important things. So-
And that's why we're here. I mean, we've been trying to understand these without getting into the particulars of projects.
Yeah. But I also think we're working with a, with an ordinance that's seven years old, that, you know, seven years ago, this town was a lot different than it is today. We're, we're growing and changing, and we've talked, we've talked about, I think I've said this a couple of times now, we're not just a, we're not, Bill and I talked about this, we're not just a town anymore, we're almost a small city. And so we have to be very careful with things like this.
Just keep in mind, we are the exception rather than the rule when it comes to growth management ordinances, much less impact fees. Someone mentioned Westbrook, they have a moratorium, and what they're looking at is putting in the growth management ordinance and impact fees. So we are so far ahead of the curve.
Yeah. I'm just saying, it doesn't hurt to look at, if we're, if we're considering all of these things, it doesn't hurt for the ordinance committee to go back and look at that ordinance, to see if there are areas that we might need to tweak. That's just my opinion.
So, and I don't want to bring it back around to the zoning, and maybe we don't need to address this now, but looking at these projects, Dan, how many of these would you say require a potential contract zone or zoning amendment based on, you know, just one, only one?
The Higgin's Parkway, a project that's listed last.
Yep.
That I mentioned is, the concept is to go at the site, the former Gateway Square site, is they've submitted for your consideration for a contract zone amendment to do that. The others are allowed currently through zoning. So it's really more about pace of how they build out, not that they're allowed in town, but-
But they are, if I'm not mistaken, they are limited to that 137 cap, like everybody else, or no, they're not?
They qualify for the reserve pool.
Okay.
All of them qualify for the reserve pool, but they're not adequate.
But that's a one-time reserve pool, once that goes away, because we're not sweeping in. Once that, one or two projects could eat that up, the remaining projects, we'd have to decide, do they get in the queue again and postpone them, or do we do, that's the question, right? Do we do another reserve pool, or do we put them back in the queue?
And these projects are understandably interested in the upfront assurances that when they run and pull permits, they're available to them. And that's a very real concern that is why we're here.
Again, we realize there's a lot. We're, we're talking about the history of growth management, we're talking about impact fees, we're talking about multifamily trends, and now the reserve pool. So this is a lot of information. And I think what we're trying
to parse out here is, and we're still kind of going, is a one-bedroom multifamily unit is very different than a four-bedroom single-family house. And so we have a growth management ordinance that is set up principally for three and four-bedroom single-family houses. And we're now seeing one-bedroom, two-bedroom multifamily units. And then we need to understand what that means for the growth management ordinance, and what it means for municipal impacts, and also value for the town. So-
But to your earlier point, though, in a multi-unit, they count as a percentage of the one growth credit, correct? It's not like one single-family home swaps out for a one-family residential.
Yeah, a half a unit.
For one bed, a two-bedroom, I'm assuming, is the full.
It's a point six seven.
And a half a permit.
Thank you.
So it seems like that your slide is a transitional slide to move us into what is being requested, or at least where we're going, maybe if we can-
Dan.
Just one quick, one quick response to the councilor's last point in terms of the ordinance. Just want to let you know that the long-range planning committee is taking a very, very hard look at how the current ordinance is structured today to try to assist you in making the right decision as, as we move forward. I mean, we're spending a tremendous amount of time right now on that as a, as a whole, to try to give you some, you know, a smoother impact to you as counselors when, when you have to address it.
One quick question for you. Do we have an idea when that contract zone is going to come, scheduled next month or? I've been, I've been holding this back literally for months, as I said, so I just can't hold any water.
So, just for, we're on our next slide.
It's like clicker.
So, we talked a lot about traffic, and a few counselors were curious about traffic comparison. This is our best way of comparing, where one unit roughly compares to 1,000 square feet of office or retail. So office is generally two PM, peak hour trips. So the busy time of the day, two car trips go to, two, two car trips are generated by 1,000 square feet of office. Retail is very high, as you experienced on Payne Road. Over 10 trips per 1,000 square feet of retail in the peak hour of the day, which is usually the afternoon commuter hour. Single-family homes is a little bit over a trip per unit. Multifamily's a little bit more than half a trip. So thinking about office, retail, commercial areas, you know, Gateway Square is going to generate, if, say that goes to multifamily housing, it's going to generate a lot less traffic than what would have gone there a few years ago that was planned. Same would be for Enterprise.
But it's still additional traffic.
It's still over-
Additional traffic to today, and today's the problem, so.
Absolutely.
Just something to consider, yeah.
I'm just saying-
Just something to consider.
Just want to put to Transportation Committee.
If you compare it, compare the two, that's the comparison. In terms of valuation, and Karen probably can speak to this better, certainly can speak to this better than I. As mentioned, the recent projects that sold Foxcroft and Fox Lantern, they're value. Looking at similar projects, these multifamily, these larger multifamily projects are very comparable to commercial value in terms of valuation. And the Gateway Square site, you know, it's probably in the 30 to 35 million dollar range, 27 to 45 is what it'll end.
This might be a question for Tom. What are they, what's the tax rate that they assess that? Is it a commercial property, or is it a residential, or is it?
It's a different approach to value. Typically, there'll be income approaches used, and I would expect in this case, the interesting thing, these are residential uses, but they're essentially commercial projects.
Right.
You know, they're, they are.
Include that, with that, and financing.
So there would be an income approach to value, what it turns into rent, how that produces money.
As well as comps.
Yeah.
Cops, too.
Right, but the point is, it's not, it's not the same as a single-family home, where you just have square footage and it's X, per mure, or whatever.
It's a more complicated approach to that. And they're all intended to be rental units, they're not condos or two-on-one.
Not yet. They can turn that, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a form of ownership. They could convert them into condos. It's not, it's not a land, that's not a zoning board, planning board.
It can, in any time, they can just-
It's a dwelling unit. It can be rental, or it can be-
But what we know about these projects, they have a rental at this point, compared to anything else.
Do we know if there's any kind of difference to the impact or the usage of the analysis based on when it's a rental versus?
More about bedrooms. It's more about bedrooms. Yeah. And so when we talk about these kind of valuations, and the last bullet is positive ROI, positive return on investment in terms of tax value versus service demand, that's not across-the-board multifamily housing. That doesn't include three-bedroom multifamily housing. We're talking more narrowly about one and two-bedroom. And so that's, there's a fair distinction there.
Dan, on the third bullet, the 27 to 45, what is the span over time to reach the maximum? Is it three years, five years after the project's been done? Is it, you know, what's their typical span of that?
Depends on the build-out of the, of the project.
But that estimate is based upon the full build-out.
Exactly. That estimate's basically full build-out.
Okay. Second is that, would we be able to assess in any of these projects what the impact is to the valuation for the surrounding area? Because I know that there, it impacts other parts. So as an example, Gateway will impact, obviously, I can't remember the name of the project, so I'm just going to reference the store, but the Capella project that went in, which had a TIF on it. Have we done any analysis of the, you know, kind of the regional area?
We've not looked at that, what, what the impact, other than when we start talking about economic impacts. We've looked at what we think some of the economic development impacts are, but not necessarily the impact of valuation.
Yeah, I don't know how we document that, but it only stands to reason when you put five, 400 to 500 people in close proximity, it's going to help vibrancy. The next slide gets into the suggestion that there might be a- next slide gets into the suggestion that there might be a development catalyst that would cause this. There's no way to document this.
It's up to you. Dan's tired. So, so, we, you know, it, we've all struggled a little bit with trying to understand, you know, we, we think of these, particularly the Enterprise Business Park and Higginson Parkway, as really being business zones, places that are reserved for business development. So, when we went about looking at, all right, well, how does this relate to economic development? Number one, one question is valuation. But there are some other impacts, we think, on, you know, the economic development policies of the town when we talk about multifamily development. And one of the things that we've talked about a lot at the SEDCO board and Long Range Planning Committee, you know, is this change in the demand for office? What office development there is doesn't want to be isolated and in, you know, traditional business parks. They want to be more part of a community, they want more amenities, they want to feel like things are going on. And that's more than theoretical. I can tell you that in working with several prospects, two of them large, 150,000 square feet, they are very clear that they, they want to be closer to the community, closer to where there's action, closer to restaurants. They sometimes think of Higginson Parkway, and I'm just on the phone this afternoon with someone, it feels isolated to us. And so, what we're thinking is, all right, fine, let's talk about what multifamily development, what a project of the scale that, you know, is going to be before you next week, does that begin to create some interest in activity and vibrancy in this Higginson Parkway corridor? And I, you know, a reasonable approach to that is, I think it does start to create some, some vibrancy. I don't think, I don't think we know the, the direct impact, but it certainly contributes to some of the issues that we've been hearing from folks as we've been talking with them. We've looked at the value from several different standpoints, and, you know, we've looked at both example projects, you know, Cabela's, Horizon Solutions, as well as coming at it from a standpoint of, you know, construction value per square foot of construction. We can get some pretty standard office numbers about that. And what we do come up with is some numbers that are similar. They're similar in nature, they're, I, I think it's, I think we, we did compare it in the, in the memo, but they're very, they're very similar in nature in terms of that spread. It all depends, like it does in any type of valuation, high-end office, high-end medical with labs has got a little bit higher value, high-end residential units with granite countertops and all of those types of finishes, that pushes that res, that residential up. I think that the difference that we look at a little bit is, is the square footage. We think the residential approach, the multifamily, is probably going to have a little bit more square footage in Gateway Square. The commercial development, we've been using sort of a theoretical build-out of about 300,000 square feet, and that's what we based some of our analysis on in terms of getting the, the spreads. Again, so, not equal, but pretty comparable in terms of those ranges.
But I just want to interject, that's an important exercise. It was important to understand that. But the reality is, we have 15 years of experience in the Parkway, nothing's happened.
Right.
And the sort of message we're hearing from the developing community, that retail of large scale and office is virtually nonexistent. And so, the likelihood, you can theoretically do that and say, wouldn't it be nice if we had this development? But the fact is, the market isn't there for that. And so, it's kind of the bird in the hand in the conversation. We've got a project that wants to be there. And the other stuff is theoretical.
I, I'm a little more positive about there. There's some, there are, there are some, some projects out there. At least, you know, that's what I spend my days trying to.
But there are, there are a lot of projects similar to what we're talking about for Gateway Square that are going on in northern New England.
Right.
Bedford, New Hampshire is the best example, the Wayfarer, the old Wayfarer Hotel site, which is being redeveloped with the primary component being housing.
Yeah.
With commercial built around it. And some of the developments along the seacoast in Portsmouth, Hampton, again, it's housing going and coinciding with, with commercial development.
Didn't the credit union behind Agony there choose that site for that reason?
They did. They chose, they chose that site because it's vibrant, it's close to restaurants, it's, it's where they want to be. They looked at all of these other areas.
Yeah.
And they wanted to give their employees options.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. They wanted to give their employees options.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's like part of their whole scheme of, you know, even inside their building and how they work and, you know. But I've heard the same comments about Higginson Parkway is that it feels almost cold.
Yeah, I see. So, you know, I, I, again, we, we think that there's a role for multifamily in creating this interesting and, you know, hopefully inviting corridor. The, the next thing that is definitely, you know, it's a policy issue throughout the state, throughout the region, and right here in Scarborough, is this, you know, issue of workforce. And right now, the unemployment rate in Scarborough, in the city of Portland, which generally has traditionally had a higher unemployment rate, and the county is like 2.7, 2.8 percent. And that's, you know, we're, we're starving our businesses. When I look at, you know, pick any of the job sites out there, I think we, we pulled the stats from Indeed, there were 90 jobs in Scarborough. And I took out all the stuff that looked like it was made up, like the stuff that looked like you're really working for yourself, and it wasn't really a job. So, I took out all of those, and I had 90 jobs in 60 different companies in Scarborough actively looking. And in all types of jobs. You know, there's certainly a lot of medical service providers, I should say the, the administrative part of, of the medical offices. But Sun Life was advertising, Hanford was advertising, so these are executive positions. So, again, I don't mean to, no pun intended, belabor the issue there. But we do feel that housing plays a role in that. It doesn't solve the issue, but it does provide, it does play a role in the development of workforce. And we're playing a regional role there too. And one of the things that we certainly hear, you know, is the logistics of Scarborough, particularly Higginson Parkway, are great. And those same logistics apply to residents as well as, you know, the businesses, because you've got two-worker households going in different directions. So, there's a lot of, you know, quality to the, to the location of Higginson Parkway for some of the residences.
We've got a minute to time, so maybe we can wrap this up.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure we get some discussion going around the table as well.
We've talked about it a little bit, we create opportunities for transit, and, you know, you can't help but say, if you've got, you know, 300 units going in on Higginson Parkway, you know, we're really sparking some demand for goods and services for our existing businesses. And hopefully, driving some additional business growth.
Okay. Covered a lot of territory. This is sort of our summary slide, and then we have the final slide for next steps. You know, as we covered, we have a growth management ordinance. It hasn't been taxed heavily in the last eight years. You know, it's been working fine, given that it's, was set up for the type of development we've been seeing. And it's really there to kind of pace housing construction that has had historically big impacts on the schools and also municipal services. So, it's in place. But now, we need to look at the reserve pool. We've had zoning, and we've sort of strategically established it to allow for a wide range of housing, you know. And we're, we're seeing, frankly, all the housing options that we originally zoned for. We still see strong, single-family development. We're seeing now townhouse development, and we're now seeing some multifamily. So, we're, you know, the, kind of have, we've allowed the market to, to deliver, I guess, under our zoning. And it's, it's, we've talked a lot about these one and two-bedroom, multifamily developments, and that's really what we're talking about as it relates potentially to the reserve pool. And I know, I'm sure more analysis is needed, but initial analysis suggests that it's, frankly, it's more similar to kind of office-style commercial in a lot of ways. It's similar in value, it's similar in service demands, it's being relatively low, and moderate in some areas, but relatively low. And it looks to have a pretty strong positive ROI. And again, we're talking about one and two-bedroom, we're not talking about every multifamily housing type out there. But the smaller units with smaller occupants seemingly have low impacts on the schools and the community. And so, that kind of leads us to this reserve pool. And it exists strategically for kind of special projects, for projects we've been incentivizing through zoning, and also for projects that don't fit well under kind of the typical application of our annual allocation, kind of typical residential scene. So, it's there, it's there to be used, but it doesn't have capacity for what's, what's in the pipeline, what's either approved or allowed under zoning. So, that's why we're feeding you all this information. Probably feeling like there's a lot of stuff's coming at you. So, this is really a orientation to the issue, the past, et cetera. And these are kind of the next steps that we see.
Maybe I can speak to these. So, it's, on, on the agenda next week, we just received a full package today, is a contract zone request. Again, these two big projects meet the zoning, they don't need any kind of underlying zoning, it's fully intact. There's one little hitch for the Gateway Square, former Gateway Square project that Dan referred to earlier. There's a requirement in the HB zone, which that is, having a 60-40 ratio to commercial residential. I see Will Nodding, I remember him asking, raising a question about that when the HB zone discussion was being had around multifamily. And obviously, this project can't meet that requirement, so they're looking for relief of that piece. And uniquely, there is a contract zone in place, they're not creating one, they're looking to amend it to enable this project to go forward. Fairly quickly after that, the other project, in fact, the Gateway Square would equally benefit, is a conversation around replenishing or adding to the growth, the reserve pool to give these projects confidence to move forward. And I would envision that coming fairly shortly in the new year, probably January, February, the very latest. These projects are interested in knowing whether this is viable.
So, if I could, a couple of things, I, I'd like to see too, is the single-family permit requests as well, because, I mean, the whole point of limiting growth is spreading it out equally over the town. So, if we're going to exceed the allotted reserve or something, I'd like to know what else is going on outside of the multifamily as well, to see kind of where we're at.
You mean the pipeline?
The pipeline, the pipeline for single-family as well. The other question I had too was, I don't know what capacity, and it's kind of an offhand question, but I don't know what capacity the sewage treatment plan is at. Are we near capacity? Are we at capacity? Are we close? So, we've got a lot of capacity space, or? I'm not saying that that impacts these specifically, I know we have impact fees for that, but if we have to do a plan upgrade at some point, that's a major capital expense we have to look at as well.
All paid for by developer fees.
Exactly. Yeah.
I assure you, that's the thing we hear probably the most complaint about, that we don't control. But they take very good care of themselves, they make sure they're not caught short. Developers in the room, I think, attest to that. I, I, so I would have no concerns that the district is being caught short here.
Other questions or comments?
I guess I, Sean, I guess I'd like to break this here as chair. I guess, this is kind of like, you're right, this is kind of like drinking through a fire hose. And I feel really overwhelmed, and this is the first time I've really seen it. I'm a little bit concerned that we are talking about some pretty significant possible changes down the road, changes in sort of where we are and where we're going. And I'm just thinking, this is the Wednesday before, you know, this is Christmas holidays, where there's going to be something on the agenda next Wednesday night, which is just before Christmas, where not, our constituents aren't going to be paying any attention. I'm just wondering whether, because we're just getting caught up, they're not caught up. This needs to have more time to percolate, we need more time to get some feedback from our constituents. I'm really nervous about, I just don't understand why this has arrived at this junction in time with the urgency to, to make this decision in one week. So, I would love to ask for more time, I'd love to get some more feedback. And I don't understand, if we're doing the comprehensive planning process, why this isn't folded into that process. So, it just seems kind of out of sequence. And so, I just don't understand that. And feel very uncomfortable making any decisions as a counselor based on where we are right now, this information.
Picking up on Peter's point, can we get a bit of a time, because we've got two issues here. We've got a contract zone, and we've got a replenishment of these permits. And they want to be secure in the belief that they can actually build out the entirety of the project, but they really can't. If we don't ever replenish those permits, it could be forever. And so, that's, those are the two problems. But the first one we face next week is a contract zone. And Peter's point is, well, wait a second, we're, we're learning a lot tonight, we'll have it again next Wednesday. But what is the timeline that, that this contract zone thing is going to last, so that, how much exposure? I think the one thing that the public will want us to do is act deliberatively, Peter's point, throughout this process, so that we make sure we don't stub our toe in anything we do. And so, can we get a bit of a?
Yeah, the contract zone amendment process is very clear. Should it be successful before the council in first reading, it's referred to the planning board, and it doesn't come back to you until they have, actually, preliminary approval. So, that project is fully scoped and developed and, and has very high level of analysis and approval before it ever comes back. So, our analysis hasn't had the luxury of knowing the particulars of either of those projects. We've done it based on a number of other sources that we've looked to. But those details will be known very intimately as part of that process with the planning board. And I would think February, at the earliest, it would come back to you, maybe even later. Depends on how quickly they work through the planning board process.
And can, and can we do further sort of collaborative work, workshop work between now and then, and, and get a sense of how the planning board treated with it, maybe meet with the planning board or its leadership? So, I would just think we'd feel more comfortable if, when this comes back, whether it's February or March, which is going to be several meetings of the planning board, that we would be able to be more on top of it. Because we're talking about a 300-unit project. So, whatever we do on it, we really want to, this is a really important thing for us to focus on.
Yeah, my concern is that, you know, and this is nothing against the planning board or long-term planning, or anybody else who's been involved in this SEDCO. At the end of the day, we're the elected officials that it's going to come down on, and we have to be able to answer for everything that's done. So, if we're not comfortable, fully comfortable with it, or the process that's happening, then it's our job to slow it down.
Can I ask two question and comment? Tom, you said there might be two that would have to go to the planning board. Is there another contract? Another contract. But the other, the other. Project is interested in getting certain deal down the growth permit. Gotcha. And that's probably, has a near-term focus. I would, I'm guessing they're going to want something by the end of January, early February. Got it. And the other thing that I heard tonight was that one of the issues that we have is we have the growth ordinance around plan, or around, based around, single-family homes. And maybe what we should be doing is reviewing in ordinance, the ordinance committee to determine if there's some changes that need to be made to accommodate for the, you know, fairly recent demand in multifamily.
I agree.
Because that really picks up on the whole, because the replenishment issue is, is what we're talking about. We have a replenishment program that was put in place when we had a single-family explosion, single-family house explosion. And now, we've got a push for multifamily housing.
Right.
And maybe there are ways that we can, through the good efforts of our staff, town manager, director of planning, be protected against unforeseen circumstances as we move forward with the replenishment side of this analysis.
Maybe it should be a different, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would like to think that we could. Yeah, I would like to think that we could be thoughtful and creative and find solutions that meet the needs of the developers who are looking for this, but without creating undue risk that we stepped into something.
I think, you know, Alan already said too, the Long Range Planning Committee is going to be looking at it too during this time, so we've already, you know.
And what's your time, Frank, do you have a, do you have an estimate on when you'd be coming back with recommendations?
That's up to the council, if you want Long Range Planning Committee to continue to kind of work on recommendations and analysis, or they could work with ordinance committees, or they could, instead of ordinance committees, it's really up to the council as to how you want to have subcommittees feed into your deliberations.
We've talked about it a lot, because we knew that there were a couple of projects, we did not know that.
I think the replenishment issue is a bigger issue than the contract zone. I think that's the one that we have to come to grips with.
So I have a qualifying question I need to ask before I make a comment. On the first bullet about the contract zone that's being, we're taking up on the 21st, that is not impacted by the reserve pool based upon its current request. It is truly separate. You can get the approval for the contract zone change, and it has no impact on the existing reserve pool. Reserve pool is about replenishing the pool for other projects that you know are coming.
Yeah. All multifamily projects that qualify have the ability to draw from the reserve pool. The issue is, there's only 215 permits in the reserve pool. So it's really which projects go first and use those, those 215, then which other projects come later and there's no permits left.
Picking up on Sean's point, it's, well, the contract, the contract zone is only doing away with this 60-40 ratio. It doesn't absolve them from needing the permits.
Right. And they would equally benefit from clarity in certain, or certainty around that issue, for sure.
So the reason I brought that up is really, I agree with the concerns about the process as far as having a deliberative process that is clear and transparent to the citizens as well, to the council, because it's such a complex issue. Second is that it's about, and so our risk as a governing body is to make sure that that is done appropriately and with the confidence of the community. But it's also, even if that takes time, that's the risk that those projects took when they submitted, based upon the number of actual permits that we had. I don't disagree with trying to make an accommodation when it's necessary and it's really urgent.
Best interest of the citizens.
Sorry?
And to the towns.
It's mostly to the town. That's their risk in submitting their proposal while, you know, so I understand that, it's all business, and I know some of that risk is also predicated on the business transaction that they're dealing with, with the banks, and, you know, being able to secure the financing and the special, you know, the terms and rates and things like that. So I want to make sure that this is a correct process that leads into a more thorough process around comprehensive planning as a whole, without necessarily delaying anything that's truly needed immediately.
Unrelated, I was going to hijack if you're finished with your.
Yeah.
Do we know anything about the Enterprise project? Is that also high-end? I noticed that the Hagis Parkway was.
Referenced as high-end?
Reference as high-end.
Yeah, I mean, they consider them luxury apartments in that they come with clubhouses and pools, and, you know, they're geared around tenants who want that kind of lifestyle, like a planned community multifamily project that has onsite amenities.
I'd say they're comparable. Got it. So one place that I was going, something that I would consider is that we, you know, the developers want the additional certainty of the permits. One of the things that this council's tried to do over a number of years is encourage the development of affordable housing. There could be something that we could trade, trade there, if we were to consider maybe doing some extra permitting in exchange for some affordable units.
Because it wouldn't have to be unit, it wouldn't have to be units, it could be money.
Or in loofahs.
In loofahs.
Yeah, we want to be clear, we're not advocating for one project or another, but we want to, we'd be remiss not to make you aware of an opportunity. And how long that window's open, I don't know, I can maybe get a better sense, but I just want to make sure that you appreciate the kind of level of analysis we've gone through, that you shared tonight, and you're aware of some opportunities, and I don't think that has an endless period. I think there's some time where people wanted, put their money to play somewhere else.
Just one of, another piece of it is that we don't control when contract zones come in. So it's their right and their application to apply to you. And I think, Tom, so trying to actually slow that down so we could have this initial conversation to orient you to a lot of material, in that if there came for a contract zone first reading, there would have been a lot of requests in there that kind of needed this explanation. So we want to do this explanation before that contract zone came to you, recognizing we don't have all the answers. So they're, they're going to come in and they're going to explain what they envision this project is, and I think better explain some of these questions that you have around, who are the like, what's the like of demographics, what are the finishes of projects, what are all the aspects? Did they have a similar one in, actually, in Southern New England? That used to be a business park that didn't get off the ground, it was converted to this kind of project. So it's a very similar context, and I think that will help you understand some of these things and make decisions from there. And we're learning at the same time here, and we're trying to get up to speed on stuff that they got first in experience with. So I think first reading, hopefully, is better for you because we at least introduced all these things, and I know it's a lot, and I know it's, you know, kind of confusing, so we have more work to do, obviously.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, it strikes me that the real basic concept here is that we have an existing growth management ordinance in place. It limits it to 135 growth permits per year. With a reserve fund, we have more demand than we have growth permits for, potentially, and we're looking at exceeding basically the growth limits that we've set in place by adding more to the reserve fund. Is that a fair assessment?
Preceding somewhere else.
Okay. So then that kind of causes me to come back and say, where did the 135 come from? And I'm sure there's a vote, without the long, you know, trials and tribulations of angst of discussion. Is that a realistic target? Is that a realistic, is that give us cushion? What are, are there other growth ordinances out there that change the number of value? Because to me, if, we're going to supersede an ordinance, and the question becomes, is I think there's a ramification or a repercussion for that. Do we, is it a one-time deal, just because we want to take advantage of opportunities now? Or is this going to be now, we're setting a precedent now where the next number's going to be 150? Just to kind of encourage this kind of.
Well, we're not, you talk about the annual fees, we're talking about the reserve pool.
I understand, but once we delete that reserve pool, the question, next question's going to be, do we replenish it? And then who gets it?
Chris, and to build on to yours, because you always ask the question, have we, what do our constituents think? At the beginning, that's why I asked the question, I thought some of that original growth number came from a comprehensive plan process, where the community was involved in saying, how do we want to define our community going forward? And they had some concerns. It sure seems like, me, if we're going to change that number or make some exceptions, we at least need to get our constituents' voice at the table, and it just feels like this process today, I'm overwhelmed, so I'm sure people at home in the audience that haven't seen these materials are overwhelmed. I'm just not sure we've had enough of a process to get enough into it, or at least I know I haven't. Because I, a lot of people were concerned when they heard this was on the agenda tonight, they're saying, what does that mean? And they heard some of these numbers. So I would like some process by which the public gets a chance to get up to speed and they get to give us their comments.
Chris, to your point, are you also suggesting that as part of this analysis, what we really need to be looking at is whether or not the number that's in the, not the pool, but the number that's actually in the ordinance, which is the 135, should actually be increased to in essence absorb that pool going forward, so that you don't have to make changes based upon this type of demand?
And if we do that, what is the impact to that, to the growth?
Right. So it's about the permanent change to the ordinance of the 135 to higher.
That's why I think, that's why I think it needs to go back to ordinance.
Well, just keep in mind, what's being contemplated and discussed here was envisioned when this ordinance was created. In fact, you know, the council created, created hard stops that required the council to actually replenish. So, I mean, what's being asked for is not, we haven't had to do it, mind you, and that's what's to do it different, but it was always envisioned to be a potential.
And we always came in under the 135.
The ordinance was created with single-family homes in mind, but these multifamily are very different.
But for the reserve pool, the number, I think, we didn't have experience to know what that number should be, and now all of a sudden, we've got two projects that give that clarity.
Yeah, but in all fairness though, I mean, right now, we have two projects, next year we could have five projects. And, and the question is, I mean, and I get, I'm not, I'm not trying, I understand that's the process we have to go through, I'm not questioning that at all. I just want to make sure that part of, instead of doing the quick response to this specific project, or, you know, if they're going to supersede, if they're not going to supersede the reserves this year, there's no problem, it's already done, right? The question's going to be if we go below that reserve, right?
It's not that simple. For these projects to actually pull the trigger and to move forward, they want the certainty that they'll have permits when they need them, whatever that is, is it this year's, the next year's, or three years? I don't know that answer, but.
So there's two things too, there's growth management ordinance is about pace of housing development.
Right.
How quickly can certain types of housing developments develop? It's not about the character of the community. Zoning is about sort of character of the community. What type of developments do you want to have happen in certain places? What type of housing do you want to have happen here? What type of housing do you want to have happen there? So, and it's hard, because these kind of get mixed together, but growth management ordinance is only managing pace. How quickly can you get permits? And the reason that was established in 2001 was principally the schools, because single-family housing was causing capacity issues in the schools. So that's why we've talked so much about, do you regulate one and two-bedroom multifamily housing? Do you regulate the pace of it if it seemingly doesn't have much impact on the schools? And we need to learn more about that, and that's where the contract zone application and other research can, can look at that. But we don't regulate the pace of commercial development, and it has traffic impacts, it has a lot of other impacts. So it's talking about how much do you want to classify multifamily housing like commercial or like single-family homes? Because it's not whether it happens, it's how quickly it happens. So I guess those are the differences here.
If I can just add, I remember having this conversation back in 2001, and I believe there was a strong concern about taking the approach from controlling the pace versus some opinions about simply prohibiting growth and not allowing new development coming in, which I remember there was some type of legal concern regarding that, so I think that that should be a big part of our conversation, because, you know, we've gone through the years of this, what they call, you know, not in my backyard do I want a single-family home, or a big commercial property, or multifamily, whatever. And so I want to make sure that as part of this conversation, we do look at the legal implications as well about the ordinance, particularly as it relates to trying to grow vivid growth versus trying to simply control the pace of it.
I'll see if we can find out more about timing to the issue of process. I think in a perfect world, we'd all love to spend the time to go for a conference and plan, do this at our convenience. Unfortunately, there's an opportunity in front of us, and I suspect there's a, there's a window in that opportunity. You should be aware that that's there, and whether or not you want to walk through it or facilitate it is entirely up to you. But I don't think it's always going to be there. I don't think, a year from now, my strong suspicion is, these units will be built somewhere in the greater Portland area, the need will be that, and I don't see a sustained interest for this type of development, certainly at this scale. I think it's a bit of a flash in the pan, responding to some very acute needs right now, and probably won't see the likes of it for a long time again.
So if we all kind of agree that we've exhausted our conversation, just a closing comment and then turning it over to the public if they'd like to speak, we have done, we've been here about an hour and 45. I did want to suggest, because I'm not a type of person that likes surprises, and I don't think anybody does, I was hoping that if anyone had continuing questions that they wanted to have answered, particularly that relates to the item that is on the agenda for December 21st, as well as the overall issues, is that if you can submit them, we'll make them public, so that there's no perception of hidden communications. And I was going to say, send them to the town manager, and then have him publish those questions and then a response. But it also will give the contract, the requesters, an opportunity to know so that they can do their research, as well as staff, to give a thorough answer, because it's very hard to do that off-the-cuff type of firebranding.
So before that happens, and I agree 100%, are we going to get a package with information so that we can?
It just came in today as part of the agenda, I mean, I can make it available, I go back to my office, but it'll be part of the agenda that was the plan.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, the sooner we get that, the faster we can look at it, the faster we can generate questions.
I'll share that out before I go on today.
And just to make sure, so council fully had some questions, and I believe they've been answered, but I'll also make sure that you, I think you've received them? I'll make sure you get them, to make sure they're included.
I'm not sure if I have them answered.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure she's represented. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the public and then get any input or any comments from our guests that are here today. So come on up. If you want to go down, you can ask the phone. Well, because we have the speakers, and we had some phones originally, and actually, if you.
Who's the speakers?
If you could just, like our councilwoman, you can state your name and.
Okay, Suzanne Foley Ferguson. I just wanted to, first, I have a question, but I just wanted to make a comment. Chris and Peter had mentioned, to talk a little bit about, you know, where did this number of 135, and I think Judy knows and Rick knows, and we, the original comp plan started with an attitude survey that was sent out to every household, every single household, 1999. And it asked, you know, do you want multiplex? Do you want it next to you? Would, you know, blah, blah, blah? Is the town doing a good job with open space? This is where we knew that the town wanted to protect open space, because some of the questions were here, and it was professionally done. We didn't have our staff do it in-house. We had it done through an outside consultant. And so then through that, we went through a growth and services committee, which was a whole year-long process, and an open space committee, which is another year-long process. All of those committees came out with recommendations that went into the boom, comprehensive plan. So it was very slow, very deliberate, and the numbers were based on data that was taken from census data, as well as real numbers. The question I had, you don't have to answer it right now, but the question I had is the 1.2 people for bedroom, or 1.8 people. Dan had mentioned that there's a positive ROI for the town. What I remember with growth and services is that the only positive for the town in terms of growth was manufacturing. Offices cost more in services than they did in tax revenue. Residential houses cost more by about $1,800 or $1,500 per student, per year, or per bedroom per year, or something like that. Every single one, the growth and services, I went, I tried to get on the, I tried to get on the website, but it's not on the website anymore, and I'm sure those numbers are kind of old. But we based our numbers about the 135, we're based on all those kinds of facts. And in addition, I would actually, I disagree with Dan in terms of the character of the community, because I think there was discussion about whether we wanted 300-unit apartment complexes. Now, I'm not saying I don't agree that those that you're talking about right now are in great places if you're going to have that, but I do think that's something you need to talk to the community about. And when our attitude survey showed that they didn't want that big, that was part of the growth management discussion on 145. So anyway, I'm not sure where you got the numbers, but like the Rotulos, I remember getting specifically from planning decisions, Rotulos numbers, number of kids in that one across from the library.
Number of bedrooms matters.
Yeah, number of bedrooms matter, definitely.
And Dan does have the growth and services report.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll publish all of this, but in fact, the sort of units that we're talking about tonight are a net positive.
But what I, I guess what I'm concerned about is that demographics, demographics has changed. The other thing that the census has shown is that single-parent households, single-parent house has increased. And as affordability has decreased, people, I know just anecdotally, that I know single moms that are in this town right now with their children in apartments because they want their kids in these schools. So I think that demographics definitely matter, and I guess I would encourage that you, you know, definitely work it, yeah, work it, and do an attitude survey again, I think.
Sue, can I ask you a question? So first, I want to mention, because I want to, you also serve on the Housing Alliance, which is a key aspect, and you're a former town house, sorry. Do you remember back when this started, back when the growth and services and, you know, all those committees? The clause that's in the current ordinance says that it's to, if it's to replenish the number of permits, to go back to the council. Was there a discussion about why it should go back to the council, or whether it's go back to the council, or whether it should go through another entire process? What was the intent of the original committee by putting that clause in there?
I think that, I think they had said it changed in 2008, and I wasn't on the council at that time. So, I thought, 2001, I didn't even think we had a reserve pool, what I didn't...
It started out as rolling from one year to the next.
Oh, I thought it changed earlier.
Yeah. But, I mean, you're talking about, right now, we haven't even reached the 135 cap, and now you're talking about next year, 2017, you could actually go up to almost 500 units with just, yeah, with, well, because, because the 200, because, yeah, because they could be worth one half, right? So, you're talking 565 units or whatever, and that's without making any changes.
Right.
So, but if you make changes, then there's... So, anyway, glad I'm not on here for you.
Just to follow up on the growth and services report, I've actually looked at it today. I can provide to the council, there's a breakdown of luxury apartments versus multifamily units that have more bedrooms. It gets back to, frankly, it gets back to bedrooms and types of units, you know, as sort of nuanced as that sounds. And luxury apartments have $600, you know, net positive impact in 1999.
Six.
$600, that was, you know, single-family had 1,200 negative, so I think that's probably double that at this point. And single-family, we didn't talk about sort of how these sites are maintained, but multifamily is like a commercial site. It's, there's snow removal, ownership of everything is private versus streets being plowed and...
We can self-assess statistics.
But promise, that's like 1999 data, so I mean...
But I suspect that trends are very...
Well...
Yeah, so, if we can hold our comments until another time, because this is really for the public, and I saw that you'd like to speak.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Gail Brazile, I serve on Settle Board, and I guess I would like to bring to attention, I think you're missing great opportunities, to great opportunities in these multifamily with these millennials that are out there, these young urban professionals that are looking for places to live. When I go to look and bring new faculty members into my college here, they're looking for apartments initially to live in. They can't find anything in Scarborough. They end up in Falmouth and Yarmouth, or they end up in Saco. Folks that want to work in Portland can't find things. They'd like to be in Scarborough, but the closest they can find is Portland. These are folks that are going to be making good money, and when we try to recruit people, or we try to recruit students, they cannot find housing in the area. And I think we're missing a great opportunity if we don't think about these multifamily units, which will be able to attract these young urban professionals, these new professionals, as well as potentially students. Second thing I would argue, when you think about this gateway, the people that move into these apartments aren't going to necessarily be concerned around, they want to move into that type of environment. That's what they're, they're comfortable in. You're going to attract people that don't necessarily want the other areas that we have in Scarborough, and I don't think if we eliminate those possibilities, we're eliminating people that are going to help be part of our workforce. When I talk to the employers that I know, they can't find people to work in their business, because they can't find housing that is nearby that they can afford. And particularly, they want rental apartments when they're starting out as young urban professionals, so...
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. Rocky Brizber. Thought of a lot of things to say, but I'm trying to keep it brief. The 135 cap, as I recall, was, was a bunch of developers fighting as hard as they could to get it up to 135, so that they didn't get put out of business. We felt it should have been 180 at the time, and 135 is basically where we settled. We pushed really hard back then, too, to make sure that there was a rollover, because we knew the market was going to turn, we knew that there'd be a downturn, and then we knew it would rebound at some point in time, that we'd need those permits. And I mean being that the growth, this whole ordinance is unnecessary. We've never hit the cap. Since the day it was, you know, put in place, we've never hit the cap. It's been a total waste of time for town staff, it's, you know, Brian sucks up a bunch of his time. For what? Let the market do what the market wants to do. That's exactly what happened. And we were all worried about growth. It slowed down, it sped up. It's going to continue to do that. Interest rates are a huge driving factor in apartments being built. Why did we go 25, 30 years with no apartments? Wasn't because there wasn't demand, it was demand. You couldn't, you couldn't afford to build them. Couldn't make the numbers work. Well, guess what? The forward swap just went to 474 today.
Yep.
A month ago, we financed a project at 33. Those numbers weren't. Getting up into the fives is going to get a little scary. I personally would not be proposing a 300-unit project today. I don't, I wouldn't have the nerve to do it. But, that being said, you've got an opportunity, and I do feel that they, that they produce income for the town. They also provide an opportunity for people who live in the town that maybe can't afford or don't want to own a house. We, as a lot of people know, have built a handful of units in the last 15 months. We've built 100 in, I'm trying to think of where we're at right now, we're not quite done on third project, we're about 120 units deep in Westbrook, all one- and two-bedroom units. That's something I want to focus on. The number of bedrooms makes the difference. One- and two-bedroom apartments don't produce a lot of children. Now, I personally think there's nothing wrong with kids. I think that's really why we're put on Earth, is to raise kids. But, it costs money to educate, and I understand the concern. So, one- and two-bedroom units, our units, you know, the proof is in the pudding, if you look at Foxcroft, that's 104 units, they're all two-bedroom, and I can't remember what you said, Karen, nine kids. 120 units deep in Westbrook, we have two school-aged children in our units so far. We had, Mark Iman has done a couple of studies and updated things for us. He told us, in the first 146, we should be looking at around three, and we've got 110 units proposed in Westbrook right now, and we're planning on another three there. So, and it's proving out. You look at Foxcroft, he did bring up Coach Lanton. Coach Lanton had a few more. Coach Lanton has, I believe, almost half of three-bedroom units. There's a big difference, very big difference. So, what we've been doing is market rate, and that's, that's kind of an important piece. We know that our units in particular, our one-bedroom units are renting in the 1250 range, which includes heat and hot water. We know that's right about where market is for those. Those are 750, a little under 750 square feet in size. Our two-bedroom units are about 1,000 square feet in size, those rent for 1,400, yeah, heat and hot water included. That's actually probably about 100 bucks under market right now, but we chose to keep them there to keep them full. We're, we're full right now. We're bringing a 12-unit building online every month, and every first of the month, 12 people. So, we've had no problem filling them. Our next building actually isn't available until February 1st. It's spoken for, and we're, we're filling, filling the March building right now. So, the market demand is there, and that's why you're seeing, you know, the demand for it. I would encourage you to not miss the opportunity. If someone wants to build these kind of units in the highest parkway area, I think it is a good opportunity for the town. I don't see how it hurts the town financially, but it also gives, it helps us be a town. We need multifamily housing, we need single-family housing, we need all types of housing. And perhaps there is a way to help meet some of the affordable needs. I personally have a project coming, that we're going to try to work some of that in, and that's unless you focus up to another one, you just work with the zone change. So, that's moving forward. Other towns are receiving this kind of growth as well. I have 118-unit project going in South Portland right now. We are the GC on a 96-unit project in Cumberland right now. So, there's, there's a lot going on in other towns, too, but the needs there, you know, what's being done in the city of Portland right now, I don't think is meeting the market rate, workforce, housing type need. I don't think there's, hardly any of that going on in the city of Portland. It's going around, going on in the surrounding towns. And, you know, eventually, we're going to hit that, you know, the market studies at 2,000 units, we're going to hit that at some point. Not sure what happens, but I look at that and go, well, who does that hurt if there's a little bit of a glut? Twice the rent goes down. That's, you know, it's not going to hurt the town. So, to sum it up, I think you should, you should certainly roll these, roll these things forward. I don't, I don't remember when that changed in the ordinance. We need, you know, we need to keep permits available. As a developer, we need to know that, okay, we get this project approved, you know, we'll be, with our project on Muzzy Road, we'll be, we'll be around 150 grand deep before we ever even think about putting a shovel in the ground. Really like not to spend that kind of money without thinking I could get a building permit. It's definitely a concern. I do want to urge you also on zoning, and I know that the comp plan is coming up, and we look at it again. Great work was done on the comp plan. We've got good zoning in this town. I'm hoping that nobody thinks we need any major changes to that. It's, it's, it's really close and in the ballpark of where we should be. Every now and then, Dan sees, you know, a tweak that has to happen, and the council has worked with him on that, and I think that all makes sense, but I urge you not to make any big changes to that, to the zoning in this town.
Rocky?
Thank you.
You've got projects in Cumberland and Westbrook, and we've got a good school system, and I think one of the questions that I've heard, or concerns I've heard people say is, people would want to come here with school-aged children, because it is a good school system. Well, the same would be said of Cumberland, certainly, and South Portland, they're very good. Have you got any sense of, you know, pushback that Westbrook is a low number, because people have questions about the school system, and therefore, there's, there's just not as many children with parents coming? Or can you kind of address, I know you mentioned Cumberland and...
Cumberland's under construction right now. We don't have anything leased at this point in time, as well as South Portland, which just started. And so, I don't, I don't really have a lot of good information for you there, but, you know, would, would someone come here for the school system? Yeah, I guess maybe you could, could get some, but the fact of the matter is, the units aren't conducive to large families. They're not, they just, they just don't work. And as, as market rate, housing, we still do have a few rights as, as landowners, as unit owners, and we can stipulate, you know, federal, federal law lets us say, you know, only two occupants per bedroom. So, you know, in a one-bedroom unit, you just really aren't going to get many kids. In two-bedroom units, yeah, you may, you may get some children, and maybe because it's Scarborough, you might be, get a little bump in that. Be interesting to talk to Mark Iman and see what he thinks about that. You know, maybe there's a bump, but still, the projects are not laid out well, they're not, they're not family housing. So, I really don't think you're going to see a lot.
So, school system comes up, doesn't come up much in the discussion of people who have an interest in renting?
You know, in our Westbrook project, it hasn't come up. I mean, we have, we have two school-aged children there, and the truth of the matter is, only one goes to school in Westbrook. And that's, that's 120 units in. We have, we have, we have professional people, we have, you know, a lot of, we've got some firefighters there, we've got a bunch of grad students, I think we've got, you know, 10 or 12 units rented to grad students. We, our, the ages are, we've got one group, 20 to 29 is about 58% of all of our units. And then, from there, it kind of, it's scattered, there's no, there's no, and I provided some numbers to Dan, I can, I can get you an update on that, Dan, that was about a month and a half ago, I can give that to you. But, you know, so we've got some real-time data that we, that we certainly can share. But, we've got a really nice, you know, mix of, of a lot of workforce people, and firefighters, and police officers, and nurses, and people that work for the banks, and insurance companies, and, you know, these are market rate apartments. We're very choosy on who gets to rent in our units. I mean, we, we run, you know, if you don't have a 600 credit score, you don't get in, you don't pass a background check, you don't get in. So, you know, they're, they're good, good quality tenants, and, you know, people that we need living, living here in town, so...
So, Rocky, I wonder if you could address maybe where you're at in the market cycle, just generally? I mean, you're obviously one of a bunch of general contractors who are building units and stuff, but you, would you classify this kind of middle of the, of the upswing, you know, beginning of the upswing, we're kind of peaking now, peaking a little bit later on, ballpark?
I think we're heading down.
We're heading down.
We're heading down.
Okay.
We're heading down. I think, you know, we do a lot of residential houses, and we've got a handful going, but I think we've got a little, we've got a little lull going on right now, and that's, you know, as I said, the demand for apartments, it's going to, it'll be, it'll be interest rate driven.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Going twice, three times? Well, so, it's a little after eight o'clock, about 5:10. Want to thank everyone for coming, our guests and speakers, as well as our friends on the different boards that have participated. Again, if you could submit to the town manager any questions that you have that will help you, as well as anyone else in the discussion for December 21st, that's also an invitation to the public, if you could send those to the town manager. If you'd like to CC or send it also to the town council, there is that group email, and we'd be happy to make sure the manager has those answers. And with that, we'll turn. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
That was a lot.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan.